Okay, we'd like to call the special meeting of the Chino City Council and the successor agency to the redevelopment agency to order. If you'd all stand, please, and join us in the flag salute, which will be led by Councilman George.
Please join me in saluting the flag of our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start getting down to our new business, the first item on the agenda is public communications. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to invite our city manager, Matt Ballantyne, to provide an overview of the meeting that we're holding this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Well, hopefully, everybody recovered from last night's World Series game, and I appreciate that Major League Baseball is taking a break for tonight's workshop. As a matter of practice, staff routinely debriefs following a community event to evaluate how to better serve our community and to chart a course forward. Recently, we have seen a lot of interest in the county unincorporated area and experienced a significant change in Measure M election results. The purpose of this workshop is for the council to debrief and engage in a policy discussion regarding two subjects. The first area of discussion is related to our sphere of influence, where the council will discuss the current annexation and sewer connection policy and identify the information necessary to collect in order to consider future annexations of the sphere of influence. The second subject matter is pertaining to Measure M, where the council will discuss and determine if amendments or changes to Measure M are necessary and provide direction to staff. Please note, any changes would require a vote of the electorate. Before I return the floor back to the mayor, I just want to note that our staff will be recording action items from the council on the flip charts over here. Should there be a subject matter that is of interest to the council and is not on the agenda, staff will record parking lot items for possible future discussions. With that, I'll return it to the mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ballantyne. As Matt mentioned, we have one flip chart that says parking lot, which will be to record any concerns or items that we want to look at in the future or the audience is concerned about. The next flip chart, council direction on agenda items, are going to pertain only to items number one and two that we're dealing with this evening. Okay, the first item is our sphere of influence, and this workshop item is to discuss and provide direction on the city's current annexation and sewer connection policy and future research to assist with evaluating the sphere. This sphere is a designation for land that is unincorporated but likely to be annexed into the city in the future. Our staff report this evening will be provided by Nick Legore, who is the director of our community development department.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. The city of Chino's sphere of influence was established in 1987, and it's been designated by the Local Agency Formation Commission as likely to be annexed into the city in the future. The city is required to plan for areas within our sphere of influence. Therefore, the sphere of influence is included in the city's general plan for purposes of planning for future infrastructure, land use, and services. However, the city has no jurisdictional authority in the sphere because it is within the jurisdiction of the county of San Bernardino. It's not officially a part of the city. The city in 1981 had a land use element for the sphere which illustrated generally a rural residential land use pattern of one to two units per acre with some neighborhood commercial areas. When the city updated its general plan in 2010, a majority of the property changed to a two-unit-per-acre designation as many properties had been subdivided at that density before that time. The Local Agency Formation Commission governs the establishment and modification of spheres of influence. The city of Chino is the sole sewer service provider within the sphere of influence, and Chino has had a history of annexing territory adjacent to its boundaries, both to provide sewer service and facilitate development. The last major annexations occurred in 1999 and 2003 when the city annexed the former San Bernardino County Agricultural Preserve in the southern portion of the city. These were larger territories that were incorporated. Since that time, only a couple of small annexations and boundary adjustments have taken place, but however, in the last two years, several formal applications for annexation have been submitted to the city. The applications were submitted due to a shift in council policy on sewer service. City Council Resolution 2006-028 states that property seeking sewer service may be required to annex the city, but at a minimum must offer an irrevocable offer of annexation in the future, which is required to be executed, and if the connections for proposed development, it must be consistent with the city's general plan and development standards. Since December of 2015, the city council has insisted on annexation as a prerequisite for sewer service. This is mainly due to the fact that irrevocable offers have been executed on many properties over the years, but those offers have not turned into full-fledged annexations. Currently, there are four applications for annexation and development within the sphere of influence that were submitted in the calendar year 2016. Those are a proposed general plan amendment and pre-zone for property on the north side of Riverside Drive between Pipeline and Roswell Avenues. The city's general plan land use designation is mixed-use, 20 units per acre, but the application is seeking a lower residential density than that. The second is a proposed general plan amendment from residential to commercial at north of the Chino Avenue and east of the 71 Freeway, and that would be to develop an assisted living center. The third is a proposed change for property at the northwest corner of Francis and Telephone Avenues from two units per acre to 4.5 units per acre. And the fourth is for a proposed development titled Chino Francis Estates that is at the northwest corner of Yorba and Francis Avenues, and that would be for a change from two units per acre to designation of 4.5 units per acre, and also a track map to develop the property at 3.2 units per acre for 43 single-family homes. Now, in order to provide for due process rights of applicants, the city cannot reject these applications. We have to bring these forward to a public hearing, and the city council will be hearing these items. And since they are pending a hearing, staff recommends that the council not discuss these items here tonight because they will be on an agenda in the future for the council to make a formal decision on. So, tonight, staff is seeking direction on necessary information to gather that will help the council make informed decisions in the future regarding annexations and looking at the sphere comprehensively. This can include some demographic analysis, understanding, you know, who's out there, who lives there, who are property owners, an existing land use analysis, an economic analysis that would include property tax data, and some service cost estimates, a public opinion survey to see whether sphere residents would like to be annexed to the city or whether they'd like to remain in the county, and an infrastructure analysis looking at existing and future backbone streets, storm drain, and sewer facilities. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Before I take public comments, do any members of the council have questions for staff before we get started?
No.
No? Okay. Then, I would like to...I have two written requests to speak. The first is from Jenny Tate.
Thank you for having me. I know there's several groups and several sides of this issue, and I think some people are very confused at what they want. And I'm just here to ask that when we bought our property in 2001, we were told that it would soon be annexed into the city, and we were happy because we want to be part of the city. And now, it's 17 years later, and all I see on social media is people fighting for our vacant land to stay vacant. That is horrible for me and my family. We need our property value to go up. We are currently upside down still, and I just request that you annex it all. That, you know, it shouldn't be up to individuals to come up with this money to get these individual lots annexed. Just do it all, please. I just heard right now that across the street from me is one of your agenda items, number one. That is literally...I'm on the south side of Riverside Drive between Roswell and Pipeline. So, why didn't nobody send me a letter saying, hey, do you want to do this, too? The survey is very encouraging because I would definitely want that. And, you know, there's tons of people advocating no growth, like I mentioned, which is in direct conflict to Chino, where everything grows. So, I'd like to thank you for your time, and please ask you to consider just annexing it all if there's fees or something that we could be, you know, taking. Our property taxes is pretty high right now, but even if it was added to there for sewers or gutters, it would be better to have our land have a future than nothing because we've tried through the county. We spent so much money trying to do different businesses, and we get started through the process. We lost $50,000 buying a building, and then we found out we couldn't put it on our land. So, because things do change. You say like you have no influence, but you do because once you start the process with the county, sometimes you guys come up with other things. And we were going to be a U-Haul business, and U-Haul said, no, the city, we can't do anything in that area because of the influence Chino had, is what U-Haul told us. So, it was just...thank you. Please consider doing it all without individuals having to pay.
Thank you, Jenny.
Unless it's through fees, because I don't have cash up front. Thank you.
Next request to speak is from Larry Walker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I understand we're to speak on each of the agenda items separately, so I'm happy to be here to talk about the unincorporated area. I'm here tonight to represent the organization, the community organization named Protect Chino. It's recently organized, arose out of the No on H effort, and we are interested in volunteering to assist the city in the education and communication process that needs to take place, in our opinion, in this unincorporated area. I'm not going to indicate a position. The organization hasn't taken one minds' old news about annexation, but the issue is how to approach it. And I wanted to start with a couple of statistics, kind of taking off from where your staff left. In the 1988 general plan over there, I added them up. I'm probably off a couple, but there are 1,735 acres in the unincorporated sphere of influence in that map, plus or minus. My geometry's a little old. The acres that have been changed in that general plan since 1988 by the city council are 757. That's 43 percent, 43.6 percent of that entire sphere of influence has been increased in residential density since 1988. The number of units added was 1,224. That's 1.6 units per acre on all of that 757 acres. So, there is a lot going on in that area, at least in terms of planning, and I'm going to continually draw us back away from the red herring of zoning to the general plan because that's our concern. And I want to say for the No on H people and for Protect Chino, nobody in our organization is asserting that we should maintain open space or that we should keep land vacant. We're simply saying that increases in the general plan should be voted on by the people, and we'll get to that in a minute, I know. The fact of the matter is, the issues and analysis that you have suggested before you, I would urge you to look at the map and how it interleaves with the city, and look at these questions, demographic analysis, land use analysis, economic analysis. It's virtually impossible to study the unincorporated area without having an understanding about what's happening in the city area as well. If you look at transportation roads, that's one of the main issues that we deal with is local cost. There may be a road in the unincorporated area that needs improvement. There may be a road in the city area right next door, or it may be the next half-mile of the same road that also needs improvement. So, it's going to be hard to look at one and come to conclusions without looking and seeing how we're doing it in the city of Chino. Would encourage you to look at that. I would suggest that if we're going to do a study of any kind, if we're going to communicate, the poll of the residents of the area should probably come after the study, after the communication, when there's a higher level of understanding and awareness of what the issues are, what the opinions are, what the arguments are, so that the people in the area can make an informed conclusion when they're expressing their opinion on what to do. There are a number of things the city council can do and does in the unincorporated area. You can adopt and amend the general plan. It's a very important and legal...has legal implications. It's an important document that expresses the intent of the city council for future development in that area. Can be changed, but that's an important document. You can provide water service in the unincorporated area. A number of people can provide water service in the unincorporated area, as you know, but there are many parts of the city of Chino that also have private water companies or the descendants of private water companies providing water service. You can provide sewer service. And I will tell you, that folder of letters waiving objection to future annexation that you have relating to past extensions of sewer service, I will take responsibility or credit, whichever one you want to give me, for initiating that program. And the idea was to build an increasing volume of people and the properties that represent those people who have essentially given support to annexation down the road. The idea was to put that together at the appropriate time and move forward.
Larry, I have...I do have to ask you...
Is it five?
Please stay within the five minutes. You've got about 30 minutes, 30 seconds.
And the final thing is you have the ability to protest San Bernardino County planning decisions as a city council. I can recall a few circumstances of that, but it's been better said than I could say it. I think these are the issues. I hope we will generate an informed and intelligently designed basis for discussion of this issue in the future. Protect Chino is interested and excited about being a part of that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next written request to speak on item number one is Diane Schuman.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Diane Schuman, and I'll just read you what I have to say here. Our neighborhood is concerned about changing the zoning and allowing so many homes per acre. Our concerns are the impact on the environment as well as other negative conditions such as the volume of major impact has not been addressed for the families that live in our area. It's been said that we shouldn't think in our area we have the right to keep our lifestyle forever, and that makes me pretty sad. It's heartbreaking because the residents in our area feel that when families buy in a certain area, plan their lives, some of them for many generations around that environment, they believe that it's just what they bought their homes in that area for. We believe that zoning and rules of law were created to provide orderly development, provide protection for those who invest in homes and other properties, knowing that certain conditions that exist will be maintained, the laws and the rules will be followed and not changed. I've lived in my home since 1975, and I've enjoyed raising horses, having dogs, cats, and many other farm animals. My parents relocated, purchased a home around the corner to be near me. They lived the rest of their lives there. I find it unfair that anyone would want to build in an area where people have built their lives and chose to live in a rural environment and spoiled, and be spoiled in the fact that they could build elsewhere. I'd like you to take all of that into consideration when making your decision, and also, it's not that we don't want homes be developed there. It would be lovely to have one acre or two at the most per acre, but not the high density that they're suggesting to build there now.
You know, we can't address any of the particular elements. She's on Orange Blossom Lane.
In rural part of the city of Chino. I'm not city, I'm county. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Those are the only written requests that I have to speak on item number one. Are there any other members of the audience that would like to address the council on the sphere of influence? If...come up, please, and give us your name.
Okay. Hi. My name's Dorothy Pineda, and I live in the city of Chino, and I want to discuss or just mention a few things about the unincorporated areas that are in our city. I had kind of a general understanding that how it all works on how you develop a general plan. A few people in the audience already know that I sat on the Sphere of Influence for the city of Ontario, which was a two-year committee, them putting out a general plan before they even annexed the 8,200 acres. It's the same difference what you guys did prior to acquiring the dairy preserve. Having said that, and so I'm a little bit familiar with ERR reports and all the procedural things, and I've had a few conversations with Nick, and he's been very, very helpful. He had very great staff that are willing to answer questions and things like that. So, my...I want to ask one question here, is that I was in the understanding that this was going to be more of a workshop. What you did was just read a few stuff that's already available on the website. I thought it was going to be a little bit more interacting, more a little...not as formal. I wasn't prepared for this. I actually went on the internet. The only reason why I know about this was because at the Tuesday city council meeting, you guys had announced you were going to have this. Okay, so again, I'm not that well-prepared, and I started reading all this stuff this evening. This wasn't...was this available on Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. Okay, so I just got it today. So, the other thing is that when we are all talking about the undeveloped portions of the sphere of influence within the city of Chino, I also looked at the general plan with the county of San Bernardino, which, by the way, I'm not quite sure if everybody or even anybody in the audience is aware that it's in the making of being updated as it was updated in 2010, just like what you guys have to do every, what, seven, 10 years update. The areas of the unincorporated area within the sphere of influence in Chino, they're recommending, they're proposing, right now, whether it's on for R1s and R2s, they're recommending R4. Now, that's for the undeveloped areas, okay? I just want to make that clear, that the audience is aware that the general plan is being updated. Also, within the general plan with the San Bernardino County, although Nick says we don't have an influence on the unincorporated areas or what to say, is we do actually, at some very...at some degree, we do when they want to develop it. I would ask the...you guys maybe consider, excuse me, council recommend to staff to consider looking at adopting the community plan within this general plan of the county of San Bernardino. The only...to date, I actually have it in my notes. I don't want to run out of time. I only got two more minutes. I don't think we have to...I think it's called a community plan, Nick. The county...excuse me, the city of Fontana to date has been the only one with their unincorporated areas. They have adopted. They've changed their density in the unincorporated areas to, I believe, 24 per acre. They have high density or medium density, however you want to define it.
Where is that, Dorothy? You said Fontana?
Yeah, they do. I actually have a copy here if you'd like to me to submit it.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
So, a real quick solution would be that the city of Chino adopt a community plan with the density, proposed density, keeping it at R1 and R2.
Okay.
The other second thing is what I would like, and I only got a minute, less than a minute and a half, is that one unique tool that the county of San Bernardino has, very good and open information, and they have where they can go on, you can go on the website, and you can see what's been submitted to the planning department. Unlike here in Chino, you do have just the ones that are already been going to the planning commission. This is actually in the process. It's kind of like you're able to see what's going on, who's submitting and what, because by the time that we, the people, get to find out about it, just much like this meeting here, was a few days before it comes to council or something like that, and we don't have time to prepare, much less have all the information. You may have perfect information. We don't. We don't have that access. So, what I'm going to ask is that you prepare something. I know you guys...excuse me, the city's updating their internet service and all this other IT stuff, so if you just might even, you know, copy this, it'd be great. I'd be more willing to show you what they have, but I think your IT guy knows what I'm talking about. And I...one more thing. I got 16 seconds. D.R. Horton still has her signs up for the proposed area that they were planning the project on Benson and Philadelphia. You know, we vote no on Measure H. Can we have those taken down, or do they get to keep them up forever? They're both...one is on Vernon's side, and then there's the one facing on the Benson side. I thought maybe code enforcement would catch this back in, what, July after the election, but it has not. So, we can just take those down. It's kind of deceiving to the public. People are still thinking that something's going on there. Okay? Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dorothy. Okay, on the parking lot, I would like to ask that you put down a community plan and find out what it is that Fontana adopted. Dorothy, you mentioned the county and that they've got something on their website submitted for development. I did have a conversation with Matt Ballantyne about that, and it is going to be on our new website.
And then the correct term is the development standards within the sphere of the city of Chino.
Well, anything submitted to us that's going to be any kind of a development project is going to be...yeah, even if it's in work so that the citizens will know what's going on. And the signs, I was wondering about the signs as well, Nick. It does seem like it's very deceiving since that measure lost.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the audience that would like to address the council on the sphere of influence? Okay, this is a workshop. It does seem to be pretty formal because we do need to have public input and that kind of stuff, but the purpose of this is for council members to discuss their desires and interest in the sphere of influence and where we're going to go from this point on. So, I'm hoping now that we'll have an open dialogue about where we go with the future of our sphere of influence. So, council members, do you want to voluntarily start talking, or would you like me to just call on individual members? Okay, Gary?
The questions that I have that I wanted to throw out and discuss this evening, one was the cost to the city and how much, you know, how much does it cost to annex all of the... all of the, the entire sphere, which was mentioned this evening, bringing everything in? How much that would cost the city? And is there a chance of recouping that cost through, you know, whatever, development or sewers or, you know, whatever comes along with that? The, that was one of the things I wanted to throw out there. And the other thing was that, you know, we had, I'd heard about the survey. I think the survey is a great idea. Larry had added a, a different part to that about doing it, you know, doing it later after a lot of this information is out there, which I thought was good. But I'm definitely interested in that survey because the, I've almost, I've spoken to almost a dozen residents that live in the county, in the sphere, in the county area, and only one of that group that I talked to wanted to come into the city. The rest of the, the rest of the residents did not want, the ones I spoke to, did not want to come in, and I don't want to force anybody into the, into the city, you know, unnecessarily. So, I'd like to throw that out about the, about the survey also.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah, I have to, I have to agree, I kind of did my own, kind of my own survey. If you wouldn't mind asking any of the county people exactly, two questions. Number one, would you be interested in, you know, coming into the city of Chino from the county? And then the second question was, okay, if you were forced to go into the city of Chino, would you prefer city of Chino or Montclair? And it wasn't real surprising. Almost everybody said they wanted to stay in the county, they didn't want, didn't want to be in the city. They didn't have to be. But if they had to be, they'd rather be in Chino rather than Montclair. So, that, that was kind of an, just kind of an informal, it's an informal survey. But, yeah, the question of annexation, obviously, you know, I've lived, I've lived practically, you know, right by Don Lugo High School, right next to county for, forever. And I would love to, I always, I always wanted the county portion to be part of the city. I always thought it would be great for them. I mean, you, you have a Chino post office, you send your kids to Chino schools, the Chino Fire Department comes out to you. I always thought it'd be great for them to be in the city, and you can actually say you're not a county, because everybody who lives in the county in Chino pretty says they, when people are asked, I'm sure they say, "I live in Chino. I don't live in the San Bernardino County in the sphere of influence from Chino." You're not going to say that. You're going to say, "I live in Chino." So, I, I would like to see the annexation take place. That's kind of my own personal feeling. But again, Gary brings up a good point, you know, can you, should you force people if they don't want to be part of the city to be part of the city? That's a good question. And then again, the, I think the costs are important, too. Most of the sphere, or not, I don't have the exact number, Larry has some good numbers there. There is a lot of half-acre, one-acre properties in the sphere. Those aren't going to change. I mean, if you have a house, it's still going to be there in that size. And that's, and that's a big chunk of this area, the 1,700 acres. There'll be, there's areas where somebody has five acres or somebody has 10 acres if it's developed, or maybe there's one house on it. Those would obviously, those could be half acres. Half acres, it could be 4.5. It just depends on what's being developed out there. Now, I have talked to a couple of developers about costs. What are the costs to develop? Because I don't see any half acres being developed in this neighborhood. And the cost to develop a half acre that I've seen has been somewhere between a million and 1.2 million to do half acres. And that, and I don't know who's going to spend a 1.2 million, or 1.2 million to buy a half acre house if it's in, you know, in, I'm telling you.
Please, please, don't make, please.
This, I don't know.
Let's be courteous.
Maybe, maybe it could happen, I don't know. Okay, but that's just some of the things that I've heard. This is a workshop, I'm just telling you what I, what I basically heard. So, I think a study has to be done. I think we need to, we need to do a study on the, on the sphere and see what the potential costs are. There's a lot of infrastructure that's going to have to be done. Will the taxes in that area help pay for city services? You know, that's, that's the question. So, that's, that's where I'm at. I'd be interested in seeing a study at this point for the sphere. I think, I think Larry had a good point. Let's do the poll after we do, we do the study. That makes, that makes a lot of sense. And, and then take a look and see, see what happens. And there'll probably be a new general plan done in five years and 20 years from now. I mean, you know, we won't be on the city council at that time. Who knows what's going to happen in the future of Southern California? So, but anyway, let's see with the study. That's what I think at this point, we should get the study going. That's it.
Okay, Earl?
Yeah, I'd like to see the economic study done, but I'd like to see it two-phased. One, on the stuff that is coming into the city, what's the impact of the smaller pocket things? And then one on the whole sphere and see what our costs are and stuff, and our liability for like streets and stuff that are underdeveloped. Where is that going to put us? And, I mean, I know we've had a heck of, heck of a time with some of the streets out in the preserve because they're not fully developed yet, and it's been a problem. And just see where we economically, you know, we could be in lawsuits the rest of our lives. So, I'd like to see that. The idea that she brought up about the internet and the planning commission, that's evidently already in the works. So, I think that's a good idea. The, the economic study to me is very important because if it comes out negative, then what are we doing? We don't need any more studies. So, that's my opinion. Thank you, Ms.
Okay, Paul?
I have a few questions, but I agree with, with Tom in the sense that I did an informal conversations with many of the residents in, in the county. And besides asking them whether they would want to be annexed by Montclair, I also included Chino Hills. And let's have Chino Hills annex that area and make it into, and Chino Hills can make it into an industrial park. Well, the response from these residents say, "Oh, no, no. We do not want an industrial park there, we want to come into, into Chino." So, that's informally said. Second question, you know, I think I want to address it maybe to Nick or to Matt or even, even Fred. Generally, when you look at the overall picture of the city, we have a very visible plan that we call a general plan that's followed on a daily basis. It's very systematic in the sense that there are certain rules that have to be followed, and I believe Matt even mentioned them, the idea that you can't deny an individual that wants to put in a request for development. Is that true? Due process, yes?
Yes, as far as due process, if an applicant comes to the city and meets all your requirements under the application, submits, you know, the details of the proposed development, pays whatever applicable fees, et cetera, the, your community services department does have to provide that application through the process initially to the planning commission and to the council. At that level, either the council or the planning commission has the discretion per your rules to consider the project and if appropriate, deny or approve it.
So, what I understand you're saying is that there, there is already a specific guidelines to really follow that are legal? And also, the ability to allow people to move forward with their dreams or maybe with the future vision that they may have for the city.
That's correct. Once an application is deemed complete, that means, you know, as I mentioned, they paid the fees, addressed the environmental issues, et cetera. Once that's complete, staff has a mandatory obligation to bring that to the commission.
Absolutely, and if it's denied, then it's discriminatory.
Well, you have, you have legal basis to consider a project.
That's what I'm saying, legal basis.
So, if it doesn't meet your standards, it's, if it's, for example, you know, I'd have to look at your code to explain exactly what your standards are. But often, it has to be compatible with surrounding property, not detrimental to surrounding property, meet other, all your other standards, generally it meets that test.
I recall speaking to you, Matt, where, you know, we would say that there's certain guidelines as to what kinds of businesses or even buildings that would be built that would be ethically and maybe morally acceptable to the city that would, that could move forward. In other words, we couldn't have a brothel, right?
We'd have to discuss that.
We have to discuss it.
We need another workshop on that.
I'm being, I'm being facetious, but in other words, there's certain guidelines that we would, we would have to follow to be morally in light, right?
You have uses, if I may, Matt, uses that are prohibited in the city, uses that are allowed, as well as uses that are allowed by conditional permit.
Exactly.
So, it depends on whether those fall within one of those categories.
Okay, Mr. Walker addressed the idea of environmental studies. Is an environmental studies also part of the plan when developing? Okay, so it's already there. Besides having a general plan, what other plans do we have that are maybe the foundation of, prior to a general plan? Matt?
Well, we also have areas that we develop specific plans, so for example.
So, would you, could we call that maybe a strategic plan?
So, I mean, as far as the hierarchy of plans, you got the general plan, then you got the zoning. Including the zoning, you got a specific plan for an area. But everything you talked about as far as process, there is some discretion for the council. Now, we also have a strategic plan. And in that strategic plan, the last update mostly focused on when we were annexing the preserve and also when we were developing College Park. Those were the two long-range planning items at the time.
I, I took a look at the strategic plan and also general plan and so forth. And within a strategic plan, we have specific guidelines and values that we would call mission, vision, and values that the city stands for. In other words, the mission of the city would be to provide a residence or location for, that is planned for conducive for good living, that are environmentally friendly, that is safe, that is healthy, and conducive also for change, for technology, for proper roads, for infrastructure and all that. That seems to be a very deep strategic plan that the city seems to follow. And it's almost, you can compare it almost to the idea of, the basis of the U.S. Constitution. That would be our foundation, our solidness that we are based on. So, which would take priority? Well, they're both important in both, by, I mean, the general plan, which is something that is generally done on a daily basis with all the systems from public works to, to water, to human resource, to risk management, to all the different departments that we have here at the city. Those are visible plans. But underneath the invisible plans or underneath the iceberg of the public works, we also have the strategic plan that is like the foundation, I would call the U.S. Constitution. So, in essence, when I, this is good in the sense that we have a workshop because we have to take into mind that there are specific, specific goals that are already established that we need to follow that are in our strategic plan that give us a basis to move forward for a general plan. And, and that has to be remembered at all times. My opinion would be, you know, let's go on with, with the study. Let's look at the systems as to how they're connected and move forward, and then see what is best overall, not just for the individual groups or the individual person, but for the whole city as a whole. An example would be, okay, a lot of people would say, "Well, I don't believe in change. Change isn't happening. We will never change, we're always going to be this way." Well, time changes. If we had no change, we would never have change in technology. We had no change, we would never have new technology at the police department. If we had no change, we would never blink our eyes, it would always be the same, same thing, simply put that way. So, when you look at the spectrum of time, we need to think in the spectrum of time, the past, present, and the future, all at once. And change could be good if it's followed in a direction of systematic planning as we do in the city. So, I'm in agreement with going on with the study, going on with the research, but also keeping in mind the strategic plan as the basis. What do we stand for? And also, how do we move forward for the whole of the city, not the parts? Because in the sense, we are the parts, but yet we're still the whole, much like the United States. Well, maybe not, sometimes. But you get the impression that even though we have stars on the, on the flag, we're still a union. That's it.
So, Paul, do you have specific things other than just the general study that you would like considered?
Well, I think, it's, it's not a general study. I think specifically, we have to always keep in mind, even in a general study or any type of webinar, the basis as to why you're having a study, and the basis of the study has to be focused on the mission, vision, and values of the city and how it's going to be applicable to everyone, not to small sections.
Paul, that's very, very broad and general, which we have done. Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
So, I'm asking you specifically, like the other council members, do you have specific areas that you want to make sure we look at as we move forward?
Okay, I like to, I like to know the cost of, of putting in sewage, exactly. Is that going to be beneficial for the city? How much is it going to be? Is it something that we can do? What about roads? What about technology? Is there going to be any changes in technology for the city with the new planning of any, any type of homes and things like this? So, those are areas that I would like to see that.
Now, again, this is a workshop for us to discuss concerns moving forward. So, I am hoping that we can have a healthy discussion here. Matt, do you have any questions about what the council has said so far?
No, it's, you know, what I would probably put up there as far as council direction, I think we've highlighted five areas which, you know, and the ones that'll take more time or is more costly would probably be the economic analysis. It sounds like there's a consensus from the council to move forward with the survey, that we would do the survey after we receive the results from those studies because I think that, that when we structure the survey, we may need to provide that input to the individual who's completing that survey. So, I, I would probably recommend the five bullets that are outlined in the staff report that the staff, you know, the council give direction to staff to move forward with that. The only outstanding item for me is, you know, the current policy. I just want to reiterate, right now, the direction from the council has been since December of 2015, is that we do not provide sewer connection without annexation. And I just want to make sure there's a consensus there.
Okay. Is there a consensus on continuing to require annexation to hook up to the sewer?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, okay, yes.
And just for the record, that is your current policy? Unless the council ever wanted to change that, then it would be agendized for that type of a discussion. But at this point, the status quo remains with your, the last council-directed policy.
I do think, Gary, go ahead.
Just on, on the survey, it just dawned on me, the, there's a lot, I mean, a lot of discussion that we've had this past year has been R1, R2, and that seems to be the consensus for, for land, bringing into the area or keeping it, you know, within the city. The, there's a lot of acreage in this annexation that's 4.5, even up to R20, that I want to make sure that everybody understands that, that when you bring that in, that's, that's the way it's, that's the way it's zoned right now. So, that's the way we would be bringing it in, correct? So, I just want everybody to know that when we do that survey, that there's going to be a lot of very, I can't say medium density with R20. There'll be, you know, just a lot of different zonings that would be brought in, not just R1 or R2.
Right. I have a question. It was brought up by, can't remember, who brought up the fact, I think it was Dorothy, that the...
If I may, your question about, I think we would have that discussion about any changes or deviations based on the results of, of the information that we bring back to the council. I think it would be too early to decide whether or not we would be changing any densities until you have the information that's been outlined with the report.
Right, you're going to be studying what the sphere of influence shows now?
Correct.
As of 2010?
Correct. And we may even look at what it would be at a lesser density versus a higher density as well.
Okay, I have a question. The comment was brought up about the county now looking at the sphere of influence and redoing their general plan. We've asked them... We've asked them to make their general plan match ours for years and years and years, and they refused, saying that they didn't want a piecemeal if they were going to do it all at one time. I'm assuming that's happening right now. Are they, are they talking to us at all about what they're doing, or are they just moving forward with what they think it should be?
Yeah, staff is dialoguing with the county back and forth on this process. The county's process, they're looking at the entire county plan, they're doing a countywide plan similar to what Ontario did a few years ago with the business plan component and other things. Their main focus has been these community plans, so specific areas like Crestline, Lake Arrowhead, different recognized communities that are outside of incorporated areas. And so that has been their focus the past couple of years. Now they are moving towards finalizing those things and working with cities on their sphere of influence. We have a meeting that we're working on setting up with the county to sit down and discuss Chino sphere within the next couple of weeks. Their website, they have a website on the countywide plan, and I believe it's countywideplan.com. And so that website has the map of the entire county. You can zoom in and get information on a parcel-by-parcel basis. My understanding now, before having, before sitting down with the county, I've just been having a few telephone conversations, but before we actually, we have not sat down with them yet, we'll be doing that within the next couple of weeks. My understanding is that they're not interested in really changing too much of the existing land use zoning in the county areas, while they are updating their general plan and looking at a general plan designation of what they call low-density residential, which is 1 to 6 units per acre. That's the current proposal, the county level. My understanding, however, is that they're not really looking to change the zoning too much from what it is today, and most of the land use designations in the sphere today would fall within that 1 to 6, because there are properties that are zoned for 1 acre, properties zoned for 20,000 square foot lots, properties that are zoned for 10,000 square foot lots, properties that are zoned for 7,200 square foot lots, as well as some neighborhood commercial centers and some institutional uses. So that's what the county plan looks like today. We are going to be dialoguing with them in the very near future to figure out what it is that they, what their plans are.
Well, one of the problems that we have now is that we don't match with the county. And so people apply for something, the county says, "Okay," they come to us, it doesn't match our general plan. It sounds like what they're doing isn't going to straighten that up at all. If they're going for a designation low-density that they call anywhere from 1 to 6, that's a lot of wiggle room in there.
Well, and that's, that's why we want to sit down with them and figure out what exactly their intention is for Chino sphere.
So how long do you think their process is going to take?
It'll probably take quite some time still, because they're, they're just now reaching out to the cities, and so it'll probably be another at least six to nine months as they continue to work through this.
Well, I would certainly hope that, that once we're through with our workshops and studies and survey people, that the two plans would match, would make life a lot simpler.
And there are some things, there are some options that, that we can present to council after we've looked at the different studies that we're going to perform, there's some options. There's, Dorothy mentioned the community areas plan. There's, something similar was done in Hisperia where the city and the county entered a memorandum of understanding, where they said, "We're going to, we're going to align our plans, but the county has to kind of step up on, on their service provision and code enforcement and things like that." And the city will take a phased approach to annexation. That's, that's an option. In certain areas, they do have established community plans where the community is essentially said with county support that we don't desire to become part of the city, we desire to remain our own community long-term. And so there's a number of tools that will be built into the San Bernardino County plan to help those communities organize and figure out how to do that. However, that would depend on direction from the board of supervisors.
Okay. Okay. Matt, the bullet points that staff has put under item number one, those are very broad. A demographic analysis, an existing land use analysis, that's pretty simple, economic analysis, including property tax data and cost of services. If an area annexes, it doesn't necessarily mean that that area needs to totally be changed with sidewalks and street widening and sewers and all of that. There are a lot of areas that are rural in nature that wish to stay that way. So it's conceivable that, that some annexed areas, the only increase in service would be police services. I mean, you wouldn't have a street sweeping because they don't have curbs and gutters. Do you know what I mean? It's dirt, and it'd probably stay that way, or they sweep the center of the street, I'm not really sure.
Correct, so when we do some of these studies, we need to kind of do it with the broad, with a range of different infrastructure scenarios. We can accomplish that.
And phasing.
Right.
And the other thing too is, I think, you know, we've done some annexations, and we've done some development plans, and so I would say that, that we should look at the sphere of influence with the same kind of intent as we do everybody else, like the new annexation that went in on Pipeline North Riverside Drive. They obviously weren't required to improve all of Pipeline, they only improved their one area there. So I would say, if you annex an area, you wouldn't necessarily come right in and say, "Okay, right now, everybody has to suffer the burden to improve this whole street all the way down." I mean, there are, there are piecemeals and there are phased-in plans for things. Our area, when it annexed in the 80s, Phillips is still dirt, dirt with, you know, no curbs and gutters or anything, even though the tracks inside were developed. And so not everything gets completely changed just because of annexation. So I just, I want to make sure we're fair in looking at this and not trying to burden this area with all kinds of things that if they stayed in the county, they wouldn't be burdened with.
And we'll, we'll create a range from basic services to what our current standards are today.
Okay, all right. And then I agree, I think the survey needs to be done after we get an idea of what the costs would be. Again, when we annexed our area, because we were county and had no say in what was going on with us, the city came and made a presentation on what it would mean to annex, and if there were additional fees, or what the impact would be. So I think, after we get an idea of this, then I think probably the thing to do is either utilize the group that Larry Walker is involved in, or something in order to meet with neighborhoods, to educate them as to what all of this could possibly mean. And I think just blasting it out on social media or putting it on the website is not going to be particularly helpful, and communication's going to be critical.
Well, and I would envision that staff would come back and report to the council, and that would be aired, and people would be able to participate at that time.
Well, and I would like some other workshops as well, as we go forward, you know, if it looks like we need to have public input, or, you know, just have a working session where it looks, you know, at what we're doing with the sphere of influence.
Well, for me, the economic study is going to be, if it's good or bad, if it's, the economic study, if it shows that it's going to cost our citizens that live in Chino already money to support that area, then I would be against it. And so to me, that's a very important report, and if it comes back that it looks good and everything, then we move forward with other surveys. But that, to me, is the one main survey that's going to tell us what, which way to go.
Well, we know immediately that housing does not support itself. Housing, property tax increment does not even pay police and fire, okay?
Yeah.
But yet we have allowed a lot of development that is only housing. So that is, in a way, a drain on the general fund.
Well, you take the typical home now, I mean, you just got your taxes, I'm sure, in the mail, and, yeah, I mean, you know...
The first school bond increment.
Oh, that was nice, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, you know, got to help everybody. I think that you get that economic study done, we should know pretty much what housing, except for Prop 13, because a lot of areas in this town is Prop 13, but a lot of people, they're at almost 2%. You know, so you buy a house for $500,000, you're way up there already, which sort of wipes out Prop 13 in a way, because you've got, and then Prop 13 goes up, can go up 2% a year. So pretty soon, our property taxes, I think, are pretty high. And, you know, and it's good, I mean, our houses are worth more and all that, but, you know, somebody coming in and buying a new house now, they, they're paying a good portion. So that would be interesting for me, that, you know, we should be able to come up with that, that dollar amount pretty quick. Now, when it comes to roads and stuff like that, especially in the unincorporated areas, some of the streets aren't wide enough, you know, no curbs and gutters, stuff like that. And I don't know, that's where it gets to be the legal thing, is I want to know what liabilities we could face if we annexed and didn't do any improvements. Because that's basically what you're saying, leave the street alone and...
Like Phillips.
Yeah.
Phillips stayed, just like it was when it was in the county area, and that was over 30 years ago.
So...
Yeah, there's things to look at, obviously. As far as what the costs per house is concerned, I'm sure there's a way that staff can look at our current housing to see what services cost per home, some house, some kind of general area, and then see how that applies on the unincorporated area.
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, we have a lot of information to gather, and we need to present to the council, and at that point, the council makes a policy decision as to, you know, what threshold that they either want to subsidize, or if it's a net gain, we move on to the next step, but it's premature, premature at this point to give that policy direction without having that information.
Right.
And that's what we're seeking to get to.
Okay. I agree. Any other comments or needed information for the sphere? Any more comments from the audience on the sphere? Yes, ma'am?
Pipeline in the county area. As far as annexation, I'm happy where I'm at, but it's not that big of a deal to me. What really, really bothers me is the high density. My husband and I bought our home because we like horses and we like the rural part of Chino. I'm not speaking for all these people here, I'm sure everybody has an opinion. If I was to agree with anybody, it would be with Mr. Walker. I want to be part of his group. Anyways, you wanted to know our opinion. Well, my opinion is, it seems like all the time that somebody wants to annex, they want to annex because they want to build a bunch of houses. Every time I go to the post office, there's a line, you can't find parking anyplace, the freeways are very crowded. I don't think that you should have that high density. I don't have a problem with the development and changes, yes, we need changes, but I can tell you, I can fully understand how the American Indians felt when there was all this land and houses are popping up everywhere. That's kind of what's happening here. So with all, my opinion is, if you want to annex, I think it's, what is it, LAFCO? It's up to them, and I guess you don't really have a say-so, but Planning Commission denies a project, like they did the housing across the street from me, and then it comes before the city council, and you guys approve it? And I'm like, "Well, what the heck's the Planning Commission for if you're not going to follow the rules?" So that is my thoughts on this, and I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Very input. Okay, well, hopefully, well, yes, sure.
My name is George Gonzalez, I live in Chino. I have two acres of land, bought into one of the annexation places you want to put on Yorba. I don't mind you buying, putting a land, house on a house on a 1 acre. One house per acre is fine for me, but four on an acre, ridiculous. The housing is going to be more cars to Romona and Francis, where I live. I have animals, a lot of them. If a fly goes next door in the guy's new house, he's going to complain about the city I have to move my animals. That's my live, that's where I live. That's how I make my money. I put my money by this place 20 years ago. I don't need the council or anybody coming in and trying to tell me how to put my house in order. My house is my, I put my money, my money's there. These new guys are coming in, taking all this land, laying a fart on the land here, and taking it off. And these people, I don't know what they, what they think, but I think myself, I have my investment in Chino. I don't want you to take my land over. I don't want that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And I will remind the audience, we'll remind the audience that we can't address individual developments tonight, this is for the whole sphere of influence that we're talking about right now. And it's my hope that coming out of this study, we'll have a greater understanding of the sphere, what the appropriate zoning is, and that the council will take affirmative steps to protect much of this area that is rural. Everything doesn't have to develop high density, there are different lifestyles, and, but at the same time, we do have requirements that are put on us from the state of California on a certain number of houses that we have to have within our community, whether we like it or not. And if we don't allow certain density, they're going to come down and do it for us, and then we have no choice. So the state keeps taking more and more control over our lives, it seems like, as well as our income, like them taking away redevelopment agency money and stuff. So it's my hope that we're going to come out of this, I love the idea of the community plan, and hopefully we'll come forward with a community plan that's going to work and protect lifestyles and allow for logical, nice development, and retaining rural atmospheres and appropriate densities and appropriate places and commercial and all of that kind of stuff. Chino's a special community, and I think many of us have lived here years and years and years and care about our community and don't want to see it ruined, and want to hang on to the specialness of our community. So it's worth working at, it's worth us all having input, we all need to work together on it. This is going to be a grind, I'm afraid, but in a good way. We need to address this, we need to put this on the table and get it out there and figure out where we're going, and then lock it in for the future. So I think that will take care of a lot of our angst right now, if we know definitely what we can count on. So it's my hope that that's what comes out of these workshops and direction to staff. Okay, then we'll move on to item number two, which is Measure M, General Plan Initiative. Let's see, Chino Municipal Code, Chapter 20-15, and we're hoping to discuss and provide direction on Chino Municipal Code 2015 that serves to establish maximum densities for resident lands in Chino pursuant to Measure M passed by the voters of the city of Chino on November 8, 1988. Our staff report this evening will be provided by our Assistant City Attorney, William Winder.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Ladies and gentlemen, many of you may not have met me, but I have the good fortune of working with your planning staff and provide legal advice to your Planning Commission and other various tasks that get assigned to me by my boss, your city attorney. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here today and to just give you some information about tasks that we've been given as we consider Measure M and your interest in it. Measure M is unique to Chino and is a provision in your municipal code that essentially provides, and probably it's worth reading it verbatim so that we all understand what Measure M says. We often have popular understandings about a measure, but, but the measure actually speaks for itself, and it says, "Notwithstanding anything else, any other provision in the general plan, the maximum density of any land use for residential use within the city shall not exceed the density for such land used established by the zoning map and the zoning ordinance of the city..." zoning ordinance of the city, or any development agreements in effect as of November 8, 1988, with the exception of senior housing. So, this is an important planning tool that the voters of the city of Chino adopted in 1988, which on occasion requires that in order for the zoning ordinance of the city to be increased in its density beyond that existing on the zoning map and the zoning ordinance in November of 1988, you, the voters of Chino, have to approve it. And we're aware that this section of the municipal code has been amended 15 times, where the voters have approved density higher than the density shown in your zoning ordinance and on your zoning map in November of 1988. Question becomes, what can you do with Measure M to improve it, if that's the right question to be asked, or to change it if you're not happy with it? First thing that I think is universally understood, and that is, an initiative measure adopted by the voters can only be changed by the voters, it can't be changed by the council. So, any changes that the community would desire to make to Measure M would need to be made by the voters. And in that regard, we've been tasked to look at several issues, and there may be others of which I'm not aware, that have been discussed about ways of refining, or revising, or updating Measure M. And we've been asked for our legal opinion as to whether or not, in our judgment, these kinds of modifications would pass constitutional and/or statutory and/or case law muster. We've looked at three specific issues, one of which is unique to the way you elect members of your city council in the city of Chino. I think as most of you in this room know, recently, the city of Chino has gone to a by-district election of council members with an at-large elected mayor. And the question becomes, since you are now electing most of your council from specific geographic areas, would it be appropriate, or would it be lawful, to consider amendments to Measure M that would say, for applications that would require an increase in density over the zoning map and the zoning code as it existed in November of 1988, for property located within a specific council member district, should Measure M be modified to require that the voters within that district approve the increase in density, since it will most directly impact those voters? We've looked at that issue, and we've concluded that it is likely a lawful strategy that could be employed, although we say that with some caveat. We've reached that conclusion largely by finding an absence of authority to prohibit it. So, using a sort of Tenth Amendment analysis, all powers not delegated to the state are reserved to the people, it is, in our view, theoretically possible, should there be an interest in doing so, in amending Measure M to make territories that are being sought to increase the density beyond that existing on the zoning map and the zoning code in 1988, those would be voted on by the people within the council district where that territory is physically located. The next issue that we've been asked to consider is both an issue that is one of interpretation of the code and one under which the code could be amended. An argument can be made that Measure M was adopted by voters in the geographic boundaries of the city of Chino, as those boundaries existed in 1988. Since then, additional territory have been annexed into the city. And the question then becomes, after the Second and Third and Fourth and Fifth Amendment to the code, should the right to vote on increasing densities beyond that shown on the zoning map, or in the zoning code as it existed in 1988, be restricted to residents within the city who lived within the geographic boundaries of the city in 1988, on November 8, 1988? Or should newly annexed territory be given the right to vote on further amendments to Measure M? We've looked at that issue fairly carefully, and we're very comfortable in concluding that amending Measure M to require that style of voting, or interpreting the existing language of Measure M to require that voting would be preempted by, would be deemed unconstitutional under the California Constitution, and would certainly violate the Federal Voting Rights Act. There is a specific case in which the state of California attempted to impose durational residency limitations on the right to vote on matters, and that, and notwithstanding the fact that the state of California tried to impose that, the courts ultimately struck that down. So, we don't believe that that would be a fair interpretation of the meaning of Measure M, and we don't believe that Measure M could be modified or amended to accomplish that. The next issue, and the most intriguing issue to us, is could Measure M be amended so that it applies to the entire sphere of influence in the county? And we've come to the conclusion that, while this is a close legal question, we believe that such an amendment would be preempted by the Cortez-Ze, Knox, Hertzberg Local Government Reorganization Act of 2000, that's a long way of saying, preempted by LAFCO. And the reason for that is, we would have two theoretical problems with an amendment to Measure M, and that would be, Measure M currently provides that you can't amend, you can't increase the density of property within the city, so Measure M would, at a minimum, have to be amended to strike the language within the city, since by definition, sphere of influence property is not within the city. The next problematic issue is, it would have to be on a zoning map or a zoning ordinance that existed on November 8, 1988, and we suspect one does not exist for the sphere of influence in 1988. So, you would have to, if you were to amend the Measure M, to apply to the sphere of influence territory, come up with a new base year, or an amended base year, that would apply. The more fundamental problem we have with it is the procedural way in which LAFCO implements the Knox-Cortez-Hertzberg Act. And one of the steps in the process of that process, one of the steps in the application process, I should say, is a pre-zoning of property. If Measure M were to be amended to establish a base date beyond which no residential increases could occur, you would effectively impose on state law a requirement that before any annexation application could be considered by LAFCO, the residents of the city of Chino, or the residents within the council district of the city of Chino, which was the subject of the application, would have to approve any increase in density. And that, to us, runs counter to the statutory mechanisms set forth in the state law. And the Knox-Cortez Act has been declared an act that is intended to have statewide application, and that declaration is important, because when state law is declared to be of statewide application, anything that conflicts with that is preempted. The last thing that we've looked at and that we have some concerns about, but have not had a specific issue that has required addressing it, is what would happen if an applicant for a development with, either within the city or within the sphere of influence, that would require an amendment, would require voter approval under Measure M to increase density, is increasing density in order to meet RENA obligations of the city? What if state law, what if the application included density bonuses for very low, low, and moderate income housing, and the residents were to turn such an application down? Would the city have a legal exposure for failing to comply with its mandatory obligations under its regional housing needs assessment? It's a concern that we would have. I think fortunately, you've never been presented with that issue, and it is not clear to us how state obligation to provide affordable housing would interact with the requirements of Measure M. So, those are the issues that we've looked at, there may be other issues out there of which we're unaware, but we've tried to take a fair and balanced look at them, and we've reached those preliminary conclusions. And with that, I'll be pleased to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Winder. Questions of Bill? George, or Gary?
I have a number of things I wanted to talk about, but I wanted to wait until after the public comment.
Okay, you don't want to ask questions before?
No, I've got it lined up here.
Okay. Did you have any questions, Tom?
I think I'll wait until after.
Questions? No? Okay, I only have one written request, and that's Larry Walker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The question to Measure M, I'm going to wave my arms a little bit here to clear out the fog, because there's been a lot of issues raised that didn't come from Protect Chino, and Protect Chino is the major proponent for the need to modify Measure M. I spoke to it the night after the election, or the next meeting after the election, and indicated to you that Measure M is broken. For anybody that thinks Measure M worked, it worked for the people on Benson Avenue, but it didn't work for the people on Pipeline Avenue. The only difference is, the part of the general plan that this city council adopted over there was in the city, but the part of the general plan adopted by this city council relating to the Vernon, excuse me, the Norton and Pipeline property, was not in the city of Chino. So, my suggestion to you is, all you need to do is to provide that all the people of Chino have the right to, that they had on Benson Avenue, everywhere that the Chino general plan applies. I'm not asking you to go out in the unincorporated area and do anything. I'm asking you, as you sit here and think about what should the voters of Chino be entitled to do, there's a general principle, when you do a referendum, that the voters of Chino can be handed most of the abilities that the city council has. The city council had the ability to regulate fireworks, the city council gave that right on a one-time basis to the people of Chino, I think it was back in 1980. There are a number of things like that. You have the right to increase density in the Chino general plan. You have the right to ask the people of Chino if they would like to exercise the same right in all the general plan area that they exercise in a certain part of the city of Chino. By the way, have you ever heard of the people of an area, the people of a city adopting a law and having it only apply to the area that existed in the city at the time that law was passed? Think what that would do to bond issues. Oh, if you weren't in the city at the time the bond issue was passed, you don't have to pay. It's an odd situation, in my opinion. But let me take you to the specific language of Measure M, because it's interesting. Measure M shall be entitled, excuse me, shall be entitled as quote, no, as the quote, "General Plan Initiative." This, Measure M was supposed to be the General Plan Initiative, that's how it was presented to the voters. Section 7 of the resolution that you have in your agenda packet indicates a number of things about that initiative. Section A refers to the land use element of the Chino general plan. Section B refers to the land use element of the Chino general plan. Section C refers to the growth and identity of Chapter 3 of the land use element of the Chino general plan. The only reference in the entire document to the zoning map is the one that found its way into that paragraph that your attorney read to you, and that's the one that needs to be removed. If that reference, instead of saying "to the Chino general plan," is, excuse me, instead of saying "to the Chino zoning map," which only exists in the city of Chino, were to say "to the general plan," which exists, which deals with the entire sphere of influence area, the entire general plan area, that would be the issue. All you need to do is make it refer to the general plan, not the zoning map. And then you have the situation that the author of the measure back in 1986 had in mind, which is, if anybody tries to jack up the density in the general plan, the voters of the city of Chino have the right to have their say. And that seems to make perfect sense to me. The, how much time have I got left, Madam Mayor?
One minute, 19 seconds.
Okay. So, my name was mentioned a couple of times after I sat down. Let me mention to you, there's been discussion at this dais before about whether we want to annex over people's objection. I was at LAFCO last week, watching LAFCO annex an area over the people's objection who lived there, some of them. I've been, I've watched on TV, when this council went down the line, all five, and said I would never support an annexation if even one person opposes it. A couple of years before that happened, an annexation occurred over on the Norton Walnut area, and substantial opposition existed at that time. But that involved an agreement that the city had made with LAFCO, that if you will allow us to annex over here, we'll go ahead and do this annexation over here. So, there have been times when there was not 100 percent support. It's just a little frustrating to see that story go back and forth as we go. But on the finances, I'm going to give you a little tip on the finances, because somebody mentioned the fact that I was, I don't know, some financial person. It's been well established for, since 1971, when a study was done in Garden Grove, that the, the higher the density goes up, the less tax per unit is generated by that development, and the higher the density goes up, the higher the amount of police protection costs are generated by that development. So, you need to understand, as a general rule, and the people will be looking for this, that increased density both increases costs and decreases revenue per unit in both cases.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, that was the only written request to speak on item number two. Are there any other members of the audience that would like to address? Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Ed Li, and I live at 5531 Adam Street in Chino. With my past experience with Measure H, I have some ideas or concerns, suggestions that aren't as sophisticated as what the previous discussion has been. What I'd like to see is that it always be a special election, that it never be part of a general election, where you have the potential of a lot of candidates and a lot of other initiatives that could be confusing to the public to vote on. I think the election should always be paid for by the developers, whether it qualifies by petition, or the city council puts it on the ballot. Eliminate the cost concerns of the city. I feel like there should be a basic plan that is submitted to the city, that can be verified by the city, so that when the developer writes the ballot information, the arguments for and the rebuttals, that they're accurate and cannot be, have a lot of spin put on them. And then when they have the advertisement, that they need to make sure the advertisements are accurate. You know, we don't like having flyers and information saying that there's going to be a public community park, and there really is only going to be the park for the people that live in that particular development. I'd like to see it only, Measure M's in the future only qualified by petition, petition only. It takes the city council out of the decision. And it will show a consensus for change if the developer can get the petition signed, and it also gives the citizen, if there's an opposition by a group of citizens, time to prepare for a potential election. And of course, the previous discussion on the annexations, I'd like to see the city keep the zoning the same in the unincorporated area and annex at that density, and then let the process take place if they want to change. let the process take place if they want to change. Thank you.
Okay. Any other members of the audience that would like to address the council? Go ahead and comment.
Okay. I'm going to state my name again, Dorothy Pineda. I like hearing what the Assistant Attorney had to say, and I didn't know you were the Assistant Attorney. I've never, you're brand new, I guess. Well, not brand new, but to the city. You mentioned that the...
He's not brand new.
I know, but...
He's been an attorney for a long time.
I know.
He's all red now.
New to, new to the city, I meant. With respect to the district voting of Measure M with the, for the entire city, for example, how it exists now, but that you said that absence of authority, that perhaps it's possible. I'm totally happy with that. That's great. But that still doesn't help the people in the unincorporated areas, because they're not part of the city. So, but there are parts, and that would apply to the dairy preserve area, but the dairy preserve area, it would not apply to, because they already have...
That's a development agreement.
Yes, they do.
That's a separate legal contract.
Exactly. Thank you. I knew you were going to say that.
Yeah.
And what I would like to say, could you not propose the same difference for the unincorporated areas? For the area? Do you get what I'm saying?
I'm not entirely sure what you're saying, but, but I need to talk, I need to just review real quickly, and you've had some familiarity with it.
Yeah.
For the benefit of the public, the LAFCO process. So an application to annex can come to LAFCO in one of three ways. One, if it's...
Well, I'm saying without annexing. Let's not get LAFCO involved. That's a whole different ballgame. I get that. What I'm saying is, the same difference that I had spoke about for the county of San Bernardino, the community development, the community, I gave the correct term that they have in their general plan for the unincorporated areas, for all the cities in the county that in this sphere of influence.
Right.
So it, not, not with so much power, but do you get what I'm saying, that you can propose that? You don't have to make up a whole amendment for Measure M, because that obviously requires another election and everything else, a whole thing like that. But maybe more in detail, because it would take more than the time that is allowed here. Going further, I want to talk about the last portion where you talk about low-density bonuses. I'm familiar with that. I know how they applied, and, and by the way, a lot of people don't know that this has gone out for like 30 years or so. You know that, right? And over the years, it's just getting more. The state is pressuring us hard. However, the most recent legislation that was passed by the governor, it doesn't necessarily affect us, because we're not over 100,000 population. I believe we're at 88, okay? But I know it's coming down the pipeline. I get it. You know that. Affordable housing, the bonuses, and the state laws, obligations. But as it stands now, we're in compliance, and we're doing good. And as long as we, you know, and that's another good thing, keeping density. Keep our population down doesn't always apply to us what the state passes. So let's just keep that, you know, because when we talk about affordable housing and people that are disadvantaged, a family of four making $34,000, $32,000 is considerable their low income, and you can, they're not going to be able to buy a $500,000 home. So all the new houses being built, I haven't seen one that's under $500,000. But that is, I think, about it. I also would like to suggest, and if I may ask, that LAFCO is a regional authority board. They hold a tremendous amount of power. And often happens is, something comes up with LAFCO, and people don't even know what's going on with just, for example, in Upland, a lot of the people, when they find out what's going on, and it's not all about annexing, LAFCO has powers with the fire and police service, and whatever, perhaps they think that is best for a community or a city, they come in to play. So I'm going to request, and I mentioned this at one of our meetings with Coffee, with our supervisor Kurt Hagman, and a few of our council members were there, and they suggested that I bring this up. If we can have some sort of forum, or some, you can incorporate it while you're having these studies and open meetings for us to be involved, that you also talk a lot more about LAFCO and where they stand, or perhaps have LAFCO have us a workshop. I don't know. Just, we need, they need to know a lot more about LAFCO and their authority, and how they play with annexing, and how they're the main player as well. It's not just the city and the county of San Bernardino. It's not just the state of California. It's LAFCO too. All the major players. It's very important. So, thank you. That's it.
Okay. Any other members of the audience that would like to address the council on item number two, or have comments? Okay. Brenda?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Brenda Strong, and I live on Barclay. Measure M has a lot of different components. And now that we are districts, which we hope we don't have to stay that way, but I don't want to see it changed, that people in certain districts are going to vote for things. Because then we're going to be like LA, and nothing's going to get done. Okay? So as we're talking about changing this, we need to make sure it's about the whole, and keep it as the whole, not just a small group. Please. Thank you.
Last call. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Not used to that. My name is Jeff Hawley. I'm, I live near Benson and Philadelphia. As far as the voting by district thing, okay, so we have, what, five districts, right?
Four.
Okay. So if it comes up, and, you know, somebody wants to put some sort of stack and pack type complex somewhere, I mean, the major, Measure H was kind of about that. I mean, they wanted to just put this plot of many, many dwellings in the middle of neighborhoods that were nothing like that. Okay? So if four of the districts say no to that, does the fourth one just have to take it? I mean, if it's, especially if it's to meet something from the state, you know, some of the requirements? I just don't know how that plays. I mean, if, if three of the districts say, no, no, not here, the fourth one just eats it?
Well, it depends on how you amend Measure M, but as presently written, the entire city has to approve an increase in density.
Right. But I mean, if we went to the district type of voting...
If you went to a by-district location, it would be the other way around. If the district in, within which the property, which is the subject of the increased residential density that was before the voters, would be, would need to be approved by the voters in that district, they would be the only folks that would vote on that issue. The argument being, they're the most directly impacted by, to use your phrase, the stack and...
Stack and pack.
What is the term?
Stack and pack.
Stack, okay. The high level of density that you don't like, presumably they would have the greatest interest in becoming educated and voting on the issues. Again, it's a theoretical problem.
So then it would primarily be the borders that would be a problem, where this district says, sure, but we put it over here, and then the people that don't want it, they're right across the street from it, right?
You're right. And an argument can be made that even though a property is within a specific council district, the impact will be on traffic throughout the entire city.
Well, that's true, too.
So there are ways to argue that issue in both directions. We're not, we're not making the policy decision for you. We're just telling you that, in our opinion, we are of the opinion, you could do that if the voters of Chino wanted to do that. There are lots of good reasons to not do it, and there are some good reasons to do it.
Okay. There is, I don't know if everybody's aware, there has been a lawsuit filed to do away with the districting. And I'm hoping that if that happens, we go back to the way we were? That, you guys could think about that? Because as I recall, not too many people really wanted districting. And I, I'm sorry, but, but demographically, I don't even know how we got hit with that.
Because we were threatened with a lawsuit.
I mean, yeah. Well, if you read the law, it was written for lawyers to get rich. That's really how it was written.
By a lawyer.
I mean, win or lose, the city pays.
Most laws are.
You know? Now, okay, so, and another thing that I was back to Measure M, I do agree that the developer should pay the cost. I think that's part of the problem, was that if it gets to a certain point, then the council just kicked it out to a special election to avoid having to pay the cost of doing the other, yes. The developer's the one who's going to make the major bucks. They should be footing the bill. The city should not have to pick that up. The city's still going to wind up having to pay something, because in the cracks is going to fall sewer, lighting, pavement, whatever. Okay? But yeah, the developer's making the money. They should pick, pick up the bill. And I also agree with the bit about the advertising, because I saw the advertising for Measure H, and it was not accurate. You know, talked about a park that was not going to be public, a pool that was not going to be public. They presented it as public, but that's not how it was going to work out. And that's just dishonesty. And yet, that's allowed in their argument for why we should have gone their way. That's just not right. So that's my beef.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, can I just speak to that last issue real quickly?
Sure.
Because I've heard it a couple of times. You have a right, as residents, when you receive political advertising, to object to that political advertising as materially false and misleading. And there is a procedure under the Elections Code by which materially false and misleading materials can be stricken. So, you know, the price of freedom is vigilance, my friends, and the Elections Code provides a mechanism by which you can challenge materially false and misleading political advertising.
Problem is timing.
Timing and money.
Right. Timing and money. Once that information gets out there, then, you know, yeah, it's an issue, though. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council? Okay. Council comments? Gary?
Okay. The, first of all, just to agree with some points that were brought up, some parking lot points. I thought all of Ed's points should be parking lot points. I thought every one of them were really pertinent and need to be, need to be put on our parking lot.
Okay. We'll go through them.
The second thing is the, listening to Larry and to Bill talking about the Measure M and the legality, I want, just want to make sure, you're saying there's just one section in there that gets changed, it can, it changes the, it changes Measure M? I mean, and Bill, you were saying that the way Measure M is written right now, it's illegal for the people that are not in the city of Chino to vote.
Yes, that's true. So the issue there is, could Measure M be amended simply by striking all references to the Chino municipal code and the Chino zoning map? In theory, that is possible with one major legal problem, and that is that your zoning ordinance and your general plan must be consistent, and you cannot approve projects where there is an inconsistency between your zoning ordinance and your general plan. So if you were to amend Measure M to strike all references to the zoning ordinance, you would have a prima facie inconsistency, potential inconsistency between your general plan and the absence of any zoning for the sphere of influence area.
If I may, Madam Mayor, have a...
It's a workshop, so I just, I don't want a big debate.
No, I, the, the, striking the reference to the zoning map takes care of the issue that you're not dealing with anything in the unincorporated area. One would assume that you have something somewhere else. By the way, these are, these designations are RD1, RD2, RD3, RD 4.5. We made it RD because in the old days, there was R1, which was single-family dwelling, there was R3, which was apartments, and we changed it so that the number with, and we did RD for our residential density. And the idea was, I thought we were making one map that would, that would be, so that we, because it had to be consistent. There's no reason to have two maps. But the fact is, there's no zoning map in the unincorporated area. If you have a, if you have a Measure M that says any increase in residential density anywhere in the general plan needs to go to a vote of the people, that doesn't preclude the city from having another code section in an appropriate place that says, hey, we got zoning too, and it's got to be consistent with the general plan. And, and your people are pretty good at shepherding through to make sure if you're changing the general plan, you're changing the zoning, or if you're changing the zoning, you change the general plan to support that. That's, that's been pretty well worked out over the years. So I, that's a matter of drafting. The fact is, the reference, the reference to, in the city of Chino, you know, that's, that's a drafting issue, in my opinion. It's been interpreted to mean only applicable to what existed at the time, but the fact is, this was about, this is general plan in the city of Chino. And, and if it, you said that, that wouldn't be limiting to what existed at the time. And of course, if it only applies to the general plan, the whole general plan was in the city back then. Not, not your whole general plan today, but everything we're looking at on the left.
Okay. Listening, listening to these, these two, that would be one of my suggestions, is to have a, you know, total clarification on, on what we can or can't do with, with Measure M in regards to that.
Yes, we, we had a meeting on September 12th.
I'm going on to something else.
Oh, excuse me.
Well, now, wait. So you want further information on the difference between the zoning and the general plan? What is it you're asking?
It sounds like the way it is right now, what, what you, what you want, what you're looking for is illegal.
No, that, I don't believe that's the case. If I may, the Knox-Cortez Act, as was, as your Assistant City Attorney told you, is about annexation. It's about LAFCO. I spent a few minutes getting reminded at LAFCO last week that we're not here about, about land use. We're not here about general plan. We're here about annexation. That's all we're here for. That's what LAF, that's what LAFCO does. The fact that you have a certain process that you have to go through if you want to increase the general plan densities by referring it to the voters, has nothing to do with the process of annexing property if you're, if you're allowing development on that property. It's, it's not, they'll tell you, it's not relevant over there. So I'm not sure, and I wanted to tell you, if there's going to be a process by which we work together, I welcome it. And I, and I've worked hard to make sure that my representations are those, represent the group, not just my personal opinion. I attended, along with Mayor and Mr. Howey, who had been made a committee to represent the council on these issues, a meeting on September 12th, in which we raised these issues. And I understood we'd be getting something back from the city attorney, giving an indication of what the legal basis for the opinion of the city attorney is. And it's not in your agenda tonight. So I, I need to make sure, because there was some discussion there about whether these guys work for me or not, and I know they don't. So we need to make sure we have a working relationship. I think city attorney is somewhat uncomfortable sitting down with me because of the fact that they're working for you guys, and they don't want to run up a bill talking to me that you guys aren't aware of and haven't approved. So there needs to be some discussion about that, so the council and the city attorney and Protect Chino are comfortable that we're having a working relationship that everybody is buying into.
Let me interrupt real quick and ask Bill something, okay? It's my understanding that when we go to LAFCO, or when, when somebody goes to LAFCO to annex, there has to be a pre-zoning on the law, on the land, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can, is it feasible that that pre-zoning is what's shown on our general plan?
It's conceivable, yes.
Okay. Because right now, our pre-zone in the sphere of influence is already set. It's when someone applies to change it that is the current issue, correct?
Well, the...
But we've already pre-zoned it by our general plan.
Not necessarily. A general plan, so in terms of hierarchy, as I think, I think your city manager said, from a lawyer's perspective, we like to think of the general plan as your constitution, land use constitution. And then there are specific plans and specific zoning. Specific zoning is somewhat different than general plan designations. Within general plan designations, there can be specific zones. And it is true that LAFCO is an annexation process, but one of the key elements before LAFCO will... LAFCO will even consider an annexation application is not general plan land use designations, but specific zoning of the property. The application says, let's bring land in territory X into city, and we propose to zone that, single-family, multifamily, condominium, whatever. And that will be a part of the application process that LAFCO will consider.
Okay, I understand, but now, back up. For the city, without any applications for annexation, we have our general plan, which includes zoning in the sphere of influence, right now. We have that. It's designated already. There are areas that, within our sphere of influence, have zoning attached to it.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
No, wait, Larry, wait. I need to figure this out. So, we already have zoning, we have the general plan that overlays the sphere of influence, and it shows zoning on it.
I would suspect that-
Now, wait, an application then comes forward by a developer who wants to change that, okay? I'm going to make some really silly numbers that obviously are not realistic. So, right now, we have it one for five acres, let's say, which we don't. And a developer wants to come in and build 100 per acre, okay? So, our zoning is already one, he wants to go to 100, right? So, we've already pre-zoned it. Now, he wants to change the zoning.
Okay.
Okay, so...
So, the LAFCO process for that would be different than Measure M. Using your admitted hypothetical, the LAFCO process would then, that application would be studied and a comprehensive plan for services. How's the city going to pay for servicing that annex? And what revenues would come to the city from the county by virtue of its annexation? And then, there would be a determination made by, essentially, by the voters within the proposed annex area, if they want to be annexed in at that territory. And the process is really a two-step process. It's a protest process, and depending on the level of existing development within the annexed area, if you do not have an objection to the plan for services and the proposed pre-zoning of 25% or more, then LAFCO can approve the annexation and the zoning without voter approval. If you have a threshold of objection over that minimum requirement, then LAFCO orders that the voters within that application district determine if they want to be brought into the city under the plan for services for that district at the zoning requested as a part of the application.
By the applicant.
Now, if you were to impose Measure M on top of that, you would say, and moreover, that application can never be approved by LAFCO until all the voters of Chino approve that density. And our concern is, that next step supersedes the Knox-Cortezia Act, and we think a court would likely strike the application down and say, no, city, that's not your call.
Okay.
I've seen no detail on that, but I would like to be technical on a point that went by a minute ago. You have a general plan that covers the entire sphere of influence. It doesn't actually establish zoning in that sphere of influence. It gives an indication, if you've got an area that's RD1 on the general plan, that is evidence to anybody looking that it's going to be zoned RD1, but technically, you don't zone in the unincorporated area. You would actually have to either have an ordinance that said, hey, if you want to know what the pre-zone is, look at the general plan. You could, I think you'd probably do that, but your guys might tell you you couldn't. Otherwise, you'll continue to do pre-zoning, even if it's to pre-zone the area consistent with the general plan. It's just a technical requirement because it's not in place. But, I, Knox-Cortezia's new to me, and the fact that the LAFCO procedure is going to trump land use, when land use is irrelevant to LAFCO, is an interesting thing that I just haven't seen the legal discussion on. I'd like to see the sections of the Knox-Cortezia Act and the cases interpreting them that suggest that you would have this problem. Because you, the idea that the citizens of Chino want to stand behind the council and consider vetoing the council's action if the council increases density and they don't agree, as happened on Benson Avenue on Measure H, they ought to be able to do it. And the fact that LAFCO has to wait a week to hear the application, or wait after the election, that's a procedural issue to me. I'm interested in seeing any legal citations behind that position.
Okay. One more question. If, let's say, the whole sphere of influence were to annex at one time, so the city applies for the annexation, right? And I'm assuming that the city would apply to annex it at our current general plan zoning. Then, that land would all come in as a pre-zone that would match our general plan, and it would all become then the city of Chino, so that any increases in density from that point on would then go to a Measure M, correct?
If I may, just one point of clarification. The issue is, if, I think you mentioned, Madam Mayor, that if your general plan provides for the zoning of those areas in the specific plan, your general plan would not, currently does not cover those unincorporated areas. Those are, you know, within the county's zoning maps, so...
Well, let me back up, technicality. We have a general plan that shows our intent to zone the sphere of influence in a certain way. If that intent, however we want to call it, then gets memorialized in an application to annex everything, right? And it stays the way our general plan indicates we want that area to go, that would annex, like it shows, like half acre, whatever. It would come into the city, and then, from that point on, the registered voters of the city of Chino, which would include all of that, would then have a right to vote on any increases in density.
Absolutely.
And I think in your scenario, you're saying, if it, if, for example, you annexed all of the areas within the sphere, that's actually when you're establishing the pre-zoning. And that's what we're saying is actually the correct process. If you do it in advance, or if your general plan has some statement about, this is the limitations on your zoning, you're thwarting that process that you have to follow per state law.
Well, we already have that.
And I would add that the process you just described, Madam Mayor, would not require a change to Measure M. That's the law as it exists today.
Right.
Once annexed into the territory, any increase in density-
Would then go to a vote.
Would require voter approval.
Madam Mayor-
It would all have to annex first.
You've been getting advice from your attorney for years that Measure M only applies to the area that was within the city boundary in 1988. You can annex the heck out of the unincorporated sphere of influence, but it's still outside the 1988 boundary, and it would still be subject to that advice you've been getting for the last few years. So, what they just told you is not correct.
Just, the one clarification is, if, once it's annexed, Measure M would not apply to those annexed areas. Just, for example, in your preserve, Measure M does not apply to the preserve because it predates, it postdates Measure M. So...
Yeah, you're right.
Measure M needs to be fixed, even if you want to put, even if you want to put the people in the unincorporated area in the position of, hey, if you want Measure M, you got to annex, you got to at least change that part of Measure M.
The council would consider the zoning at the time. Now, whether you want to change what the general, or what the zoning of the county has for that particular area, that would be within the council's discretion at the time. Now, upon annexation, that's when the voters could process an amendment to Measure M to apply by that point citywide. The question that Bill explained, which does create some ambiguities, would Measure M as it's written, and I understand Mr. Walker's suggestion of changing that one particular paragraph, because if you extend it, it says you're extending the zoning map as it existed in 1988. Well, that, it would be very confusing to try to extend it to an area where the zoning map never applied.
Unless, unless you picked a new baseline date.
That's correct.
Let's say, we go through the sphere of influence, we go through all of these workshops, and we figure out, okay, everybody agrees that these areas need to be zoned a certain way, and the council agrees, the people agree, so we say, okay, this is our new area, now do you all want to annex? Let's just hypothetically say, okay, they all want to annex under that. Then, we could modify Measure M to, say, as of the date, whenever, let's say, January 1st, 2018, whatever, I'm just going to make up something, that the way the zoning shows, Measure M would cover that, any increase to any zoning, then would go to a vote of the people. So, Measure M could be modified, the sphere could be modified, and then, it could all be locked in so that the people have a say.
Yes.
I think that's why I asked that question.[1235.04][1235.04](LAUGHING).
Madam Mayor, there's an interpretation here that I've acceded to for the purpose of the discussion, but the only reference to November, in effect on November 8th, 1988, in this paragraph that's been cited to you, is a reference to development agreements in effect on that date. It is not correct to say that this paragraph limits Measure M to the part of the city that existed in 1988. That's an interpretation that you've been getting, and I don't believe it's an accurate one. I don't want to sit here and parse it out, but I think that should be a part of the discussion further. I would just like to emphasize, you've got a general plan. Zoning has to be consistent with the general plan. As long as your general plan isn't subject to change without a vote of the people, then everybody knows what the zoning's going to be because it has to be consistent with that general plan. That's the law. That's the law we knew in 1984 when we started changing these designations. It's not new. So, again, if the people of, strategically, it might be a good way to push an annexation. If you want to deliver the message to the people in the unincorporated area that you have a choice, you can annex and preserve your current densities, or you can stay out and watch it get sliced off 10, 20, 30, 40 acres at a time for dramatic increases in density. It would be good to get a clear message out on that, if the council has a position one way or the other.
Well, what we need to do is go through all of these steps-
Yes.
...to get to that point-
Yes.
...where then, you know, we discuss the next part. Okay, thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Gary.
Okay, all right.
Please ask something more simple.[1338.41][1338.41](LAUGHING).
All right, this is going to be really simple. RENA was brought up, and we are RENA compliant, that's correct, I mean, affordable housing. The city of Chino is RENA.
Yep.
Okay, so, we're safe with that one, okay.
Well, can I ask just one thing?
See, you just said simple.
I know, I know, but the whole subject of RENA is very confusing to people. Can you very briefly explain to the audience and the people that will view this tape later what RENA is and the power that the state has over us on RENA?
So, that's a combined discussion of a planner and a lawyer. So, I'll let the planner talk to you about it, but from a legal perspective, I'm trying to remember the acronym for the multi-unit governmental entity that creates those numbers.
HCD.
HCD. The Department of Housing and Community Development does an analysis periodically of what each community's fair share of affordable housing ought to be based on existing demographics and anticipated growth. And each city is assigned a number based on a calculation and are allowed a fixed period of time in which to achieve that number, and I've forgotten what that fixed period of time is. We'll let the planner speak now.[1425.00][1425.00](LAUGHING).
Sorry, Bill, I didn't want to horn on in the fun here, but I'd be happy, I'd be happy to, well, I'm a planning nerd, so when I hear this question, I get excited.[1439.12][1439.12](LAUGHING).
You are so strange, Nick.
I am strange. So, the regional housing needs allocation is assigned on an eight-year cycle. So, the city's required to have a housing element, which addresses this, and the city is also required to update that housing element on an eight-year cycle. That cycle is set out with a set of legislative initiatives that also tie it to regional transportation plan. So, the thinking is that you align your transportation infrastructure dollars with where your housing and jobs are going to be, and therefore, you can help plan for the future. If your regional housing needs assessment has to be consistent with something called a sustainable growth strategy, which is developed by the local council of governments, we're in the SCAG region, Southern California Association of Governments, so that includes six counties in Southern California, not including San Diego County. So, they get assigned a number from the state, then they work with all their member agencies to assign a number, and we have a breakdown based upon our land use plan, how much available land we have, so how much vacant land there is, or underutilized land, as the state would determine that. Every jurisdiction has a different definition of what that means, but the state has pretty clear objectives. And so, we develop a plan that says, okay, we're going to zone sites that will provide for the development of housing for all income levels. So, we have to zone sites for very low, which is 50% or less than the median income, low, which is 80% or less than median income, moderate, which is 120% or less than the median income, and above moderate. And the state, in their infinite wisdom, has stated certain densities that would meet those criteria. So, for a city the size of Chino, in a suburban environment in Southern California area, they've determined that the very low and low designation is 30 units per acre. The moderate designation is 20 units per acre, and anything under 20 is above moderate. So, those are the numbers that were given by the state.
So, if we, that's, so we're compliant now. Will we be, would we be compliant if everything is annexed in, of all that land?
So, we are compliant right now. The annexation, I could only see affecting us in terms of our numbers would go up because our territory would increase, because the San Bernardino County also has a RENA allocation outside of all the cities, and it's actually rather large because it's of the size of the county. So, we would receive some of their allocation, and so, some of our numbers would go up, which would mean we'd have to zone some additional land at each of those densities in order to be compliant with our housing element requirements under state law. The recent slate of legislation that the governor just signed has some implications for that because it tweaked some of the ways the law is implemented to the disadvantage of cities, I would say, in general. We're still figuring out, because some of the language is very vague, and I'm sure there's going to be some great case law coming out on that. But essentially, it requires a couple of things. One is a rolling rezoning requirement, whereas if something were to build at a lower density, so let's say it's zoned for 20 units per acre, somebody came in and said, you know, we don't really like that, we want to do eight units per acre, we think that would be much better. If the city said, okay, that sounds good, we'll downzone it, we'd immediately have to find an equivalent site of that acreage and upzone it to replace that loss. So, that's one of the things that is in that recent package of legislation that we're dealing with. So, does, the RENA does have implications for the future in how we are managing our land use. And so, annexing the sphere would probably increase our numbers, maybe not by a whole lot, but because that territory would become part of the city, we would have to have it in our housing element, and we would have to analyze land use changes in that respect as well. Whereas, right now, there's just a general plan designation for that territory.
Okay, I'd like to see that one in the...
And you thought lawyers were confusing.[1755.83][1755.83](LAUGHING).
Oh, my God. Is it possible to analyze that when we're going through the economic analysis?
I think we could take a fair shot at it. The RENA is a little bit of a moving target, especially since it's on an eight-year cycle, but we could look at the overall county land, we could talk to our counterparts in SCAG and see if we could get at least an estimated number.
Okay, so I don't forget. Can you put that on the direction of agenda items? Yeah, RENA. RENA in the sphere of influence.
Regional housing needs assessment.
Okay, Gary, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, that was my question. Okay, that was, that was my easy one. The, the only other one was, it's been, been, I'm hearing all sorts of different things this evening. Back in April, when we met over at the senior center, the, the gist of the evening was that the, the, the people who were against that development were, did not want to go to the entire city under, under Measure M for that vote. And I heard that. They asked about, that's when, the first time I'd heard it, that's when, you know, districts came up. I said at that, at that April meeting that I totally, was in total agreement with that, and I still am, that Measure M could be moved into districts, and I want to see that looked at.
It has to be a vote of the people.
Yeah, but we still need.
I have a question on that same area.
That's my last one.
Sure.
If you go to districts, then the district that's voting on it, well, I guess, put it easier, right now, you have to get so many signatures from the whole city. If you go to districts.
You mean to put it on the ballot? To put it on the ballot?
If, if you do it by initiative, by voter initiative, rather than by council action, right. So, the question is, would that number be a by-district number?
Yes.
That's, that's an excellent question for which I don't know the answer.
Okay, then that goes on another one.
Because if you, if it's just for the district and the population there, that could be an advantage for the developer to get signatures. If you have, you have to get.
Because it's a smaller area?
Smaller amount of voters. So, that would be something we could look at.
We can look at that. I, I suspect you will only look at the voter numbers in the district, but just to verify that, we'll look into it.
Well, if you go district, no other district would be able to vote on it. Okay, thanks.
Well, it makes sense, and the signatures on the petition would have to be just from that district. So, then it would be a percentage of the registered voters.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, so that goes on the list.
Good question.
Okay, Tom?
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out for over two hours, sitting, sitting and listening to all the annexation and the Measure M. You know, maybe we should just scrap Measure M and go to Measure N, make a whole brand-new measure that might make sense for everybody. But I think the, the key is that the people, whatever Measure M, Ed had some great points, whatever happens with Measure M, it'll have to be, the city will have to vote for it. And I think that's a good thing, because I think everybody in this city should vote on, on these measures. I think, I think it's important that people have influence and come vote, just like the Measure M, on all the Measure Ms, that people have always had a chance to either vote it in or vote it out. The other thing about, thing about Measure M, I don't know how many more Measure Ms are going to come out as far as land available within the city. Getting away from the annexation in the sphere for a second, going back to the, to Chino proper, we could call it, how many more Measure Ms that we're going to have, you know, what's the possibility of that? I think we've seen, we've seen the original ones for senior housing, we've seen the ones that have come through, and I think there's not a lot of vacant land left available for, for many more measure. You guys can't hear me? Okay, I'm sorry about that. Start over? No, I'm not starting over again. I just, did you guys hear most of that? Okay. So, I mean, I don't know how many more Measure Ms that we're going to have, and I'd be kind of curious to see if we can do a little study and, and see how many more Measure Ms we'd have within, within our current city limits. So, again, I think we need to study a number of these, a number of these items and see what, what comes about, and if we're going to change Measure M, it's got to go, it should, it should go to the people to, to vote on it. So, that's all I got.
Okay, Earl, anything else?
No.
Paul?
I think what the assistant attorney mentioned concerning legal ramifications, what we can do and not do. I'd like to see a, a listing or definitions to be written out so that we can actually see, yes, this could be done with Measure M or not be done, from, going from the state to the county and local. That way, it's, for me and probably others, it would be a lot clearer to actually see it.
We can certainly put it to those conclusions.
Yeah. That's basically it.
Okay. Any other comments? Anything else from the audience on Measure M? Yes, sir. You have to come up to the lectern.
Okay, I've, I've got a, a question, actually.
You have to state your name again, please.
What is, oh, I'm Jeff Hawley, from District 1.
1?
2. 2, okay. It's confusing. It used to just be Chino. Anyway, so what is, as far as annexing and zoning and whatever, what, how, what order does that go in? The developer comes in, builds something, then it's annexed, and then they decide on the lot size? That sounds kind of backwards.
Do you want to go through?
Yeah.
That's it.
We'll let the, that's a planning question.
All right, so, so essentially, the property in the county has a, has a general plan land use designation, and so we talk about zoning. A lot of people, we say zoning, we, we reference the colors on the map. It's basically, yeah, that's, it's commercial or it's residential. But there is, as we discussed earlier tonight, there is a difference between land use designation and zoning. So, zoning is an exercise of the city's police power, so we have the ability to say, you can build this here. In general plan, land use designation is, this is what we envision here, and there does have to be that vertical consistency where your zoning is implementing your general plan. In the sphere, we have land use designation, and so if the city does, is desirous of annexing territory, there's, there's a couple of things. One is that the city can go out and say, we want to annex this area, or we can have it as a developer, developer says, or, or a property, because typically, it's, it's not a developer unless they own the property. It would have to be a property owner coming to the city saying, we want to annex and build. So, the subdivision map act allows for cities to review development applications in county territory as long as they're conditioned to annex to the city within a specified time period. So, the annexation has to be processed first, and the city has to pre-zone that land, as we had discussed earlier. Now, now, LAFCO will not allow default pre-zoning. So, for many, many years, the city had a default pre-zoning designation, and so it was assumed that any property that would be annexed would come in at that zoning. There were many, most of the area actually, and it was in our municipal code where it was pre-zoned to 4.5 units per acre. That was kind of the, the default density. So, LAFCO rules changed. They said, no longer, you can't, you can't pre-zone, the council has to actively pre-zone a property before annexation, and then that pre-zoning has to stay in place for two years. So, you can't, the council can't annex and pre-zone a property, and then six months later, somebody came and say, hey, I want to, I want to zone from RD 2 to RD 4.5. Has to be a two-year timeframe where that pre-zoning stays in place, and the city has to agree with, to that as part of the annexation process. So, once it's been pre-zoned by the council, then the council is authorized in the application to LAFCO, and LAFCO will hear and have a hearing, and however it is, if it's an island annexation, it's a streamlined process according to statute. If it's a non-island annexation or general annexation, then it has to go through a protest hearing and potentially voter approval for that territory, depending upon the size. But the code is really nuanced, there's, there's multiple different categories of annexation, if you will. So, so because these are usually entitlement applications that are tied up together, typically through SEQA, so the California Environmental Quality Act, where you have to do environmental analysis of, of every project, and annexation is a project under SEQA that requires analysis, and so is a tentative tract map or a subdivision map application, so is a pre-zone, and so is a general plan amendment if necessary. And so typically, what an applicant will do is they'll come to the city with that whole package together because it's covered under a single environmental analysis, and say, I want a general plan amendment, I want a pre-zone, I want an application, and I want approval of my subdivision map. And so typically, those will all go together. Subdivision maps are approved at a planning commission level, but pre-zoning, annexations, general plan amendments, those are, can only be approved by the city council. And so that's why these things move all the way up to the city council. That's, and that is kind of the typical process. You could have a position where somebody builds something in the county and then comes in later to get annexed by the city. That could happen, but it really depends on, again, on the ownership. So, if somebody divided, subdivided a property into, say, 40 lots, and they owned all 40 of those lots, and they said, hey, we want to be part of the city, well, they could process the application as a sole owner because they owned all 40. But, but if somebody's in the middle of selling homes, and you've got 18 homes that are sold, and, and you've got 22 that aren't sold, well, now it becomes a whole different ballgame because you have an inhabited territory, and that goes to a different level. So, then there's protest hearing, and there's the, the application, everything. So, what we have seen typically is in a development-driven annexation process is that they will come to the city with their whole suite of entitlement applications, go all the way to the city council for decision, and then move on to LAFCO for the annexation. That was kind of a, a long way of, of answering your question, but, but because there's so much law involved, it is, it is nuanced, yes.
Nothing's simple, Jeff.
Which, if you impose Measure M over that entire process, it becomes even more nuanced.
Any other simple questions? There's no simple answers.
Our government's not simple. Anyways, the major thing then is just, you know, a reminder that Measure M, what the purpose was, was to give the citizens some input on how developers were going to, you know, do what they want to do in our city. Again, they're the ones making the bucks, but we live here. They come do what they want and go back to, you know, their place in Newport or whatever.
This whole thing started up many, many, many years ago, back in the 70s and the 80s, because of a few developers buying some land and putting dense, densities on it. And then there was a, a war between the mayor's election, between two candidates on what they were going to do about it, and Measure M was kind of boiled out of that to try to control densities so that developers couldn't come in and just randomly put in stack and pack or whatever, you know, to adhere to communities and neighborhoods that were consistent. So, the original intent was very simple.
I'm not against change or progress at all, but it, it needs to be smart.
Well, it isn't, it isn't, I've heard people, and it really disturbs me, I've heard people refer to it as a no-growth. It is not a no-growth measure.
Oh, no, I don't think so.
And I don't think anybody on this council, including myself, none of us are no-growth people. But, not speaking for the rest of the council, but I can only speak directly for myself, I am a controlled-growth, common-sense person. Keep neighborhoods alike. You know, if you have an older residential neighborhood that's about four per acre or whatever, and there's a plot of land in the middle of it, don't put 20 in there, put 4.5 or something that's consistent. If you have a whole area that's half acre, then keep it a half acre. You know, to me, it's just, it's common sense and it's preservation of neighborhoods and keeping like development together, you know. I, if, like, I have a one-story home, I certainly wouldn't want a, a two-story condominium project stacked and packed right next to me that looks down into my property. That's not why we moved there. And I, and I think my feelings are kind of generally, you know, echoed by the citizenry.
What you stated is why I voted for you, so.
Oh, wow. Anyway, it is more complicated now because land is more expensive, everything costs more, just like one person said, a $500,000. There, there isn't anybody that's on a lower moderate income that can afford a $500,000 home, but yet that's what's being built, five to $700,000. It's just, it's mind-boggling, and I don't know, you know, the RENA's dictating 30 per acre, you can't even build 30 per acre and make it livable right now. And, and how could it ever be affordable to anyone unless it's subsidized housing? So, so just designating a density and saying that it's affordable, to me, is just ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. Okay, anyway, I'm, I'm sorry for my rambling. Any new comments from the audience?
Yes.
Any new?
Me.
Okay, well.
I think that you look like Richard Dreckus.
Is that good or bad?
That's good.
Oh, my goodness. Boy, are we off topic. Ed, you had a, a new comment? Jeff, come forward, and then Lauren, you next?
Hi, I'm Ed Lai. Since we had so much discussion about Measure M and the, all, several different possible changes or amendments, I would hope that we have an opportunity to get together, maybe to discuss each change that may be proposed individually, because there's several of them that I think have pros and cons, and one that was discussed, the district concept change, I have concerns for and I have concerns against, but one of the ones I would question is, in particular, is, and I guess the attorney would have to tell us the answer, can one, the council member that represents that district put it on the ballot, or would it be the whole city council? And if it's the whole city council, we have the potential of not getting a fair representation because the councilman that may be, represent my district may actually be for the, for the project, but he would vote no, but the rest of the council would vote yes and put it on the ballot, so that's.
Well, and those are the kind of issues I think that we need to get into when we're looking at this.
Outstanding question.
But it's a good point.
Got an answer for me?
Lauren?
Yeah, Nick, I got a question for you on that.
Okay, state your name.
Oh, Lauren Struksma, by the way. On that eight years, where's the city on that? Were they going to come in here next year and say, we got to have so many affordable housing, or where are we at?
So, the city's, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
The city's current housing element will expire in 2021, so we will be looking to update the housing element in 2021.
Okay, then who, okay, where this affordable housing is, is being built, who determines that? The city? How do they determine where the affordable housing is built? And if we as citizens don't want that built in that area, do we have to say no or yes?
Well, that's, that's the predicament, because we have to have so much land designated certain zoning, and we've got that now. We did that in 2010, correct? We did that in 2010, and we actually had to locate RD 30 in a couple of locations. So, I guess the upcoming analysis will tell, tell us whether we're in compliance with the law or not. If we're not, then we're going to have to find places to designate higher density. Now, it brings up, and that's something I think we need to look at, Bill, and that is, how does Measure M affect that? You know, if, if we're not in compliance and we're forced to zone something, RD 30, does it go to Measure M ballot? And if the citizens vote it down, then what predicament are we in? Because the state can come in and say, too bad, we're going to put RD 30 right here.
Right.
It may be right in the middle of a neighborhood.
Okay, so I think that's something we should look at.
And the way that's going to come up is, an applicant is going to come before you with a project that would otherwise be subject to Measure M, and the applicant's going to say, I am, I am complying with your RENA numbers in my application. I've got X number of units that are very low-income, moderate, and you must approve that because the zoning is, is consistent with that, or the, the requirement of law is consistent with that. I don't think you've ever had that problem, but.
We haven't yet, but I'm sure the way things are going, it'll come up. It's a, it's a good question, Lauren, and it's some of the stuff that we have to grapple with, which isn't easy. Any other last comments before we move forward? Okay, Hope, you have to come up here, please, Jenny. Jenny, right, Jennifer?
Hi, I'm Jenny Tate. I had a question.
I had a question about educating the public, and maybe I need to be educated too. There's a lot of fear about, like, losing your horses, or people reporting your animals or losing your business because of trucks or traffic. But, like, I live next to a trucking yard. I knew it was there when I built my house, so we just built the, the windows thicker and the doors thicker, and we don't hear them at all. It's wonderful. But, um, so isn't there rules about them being grandfathered in, and I'm not going to be able to complain and get them kicked out? Isn't that the same? Can we educate people a little bit about that? Or am I wrong?
Well, that, we, we could have a whole workshop just on that. But there are, there are grandfathered-in uses, and there's some uses that, that can stay the way they're, they are until there's either ownership or, or a major modification to the property. You know, we've seen in our ag preserve, there were dairies there, and they were told they could stay in perpetuity because they were grandfathered in. But the complaints from the new residents coming in drove them out. And that happens sometimes. So I think a lot of that, that would be hard to address generally. It depends on the usage on the property, what it was zoned for. If it's in the county, it may have been zoned one way. When it annexes, it may change to something else, and it may stay grandfathered until there's a change to the property. Those are kind of individual cases, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong, Matt. But I think those are more we'd have to look at by area and specific things as we get further down the line, Jenny.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, last minute, or any additional comments from council? Well, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening. We have a lot of work in front of us.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, just to clarify, so the direction to staff is, right now, we're not making any proposed amendments. We're going to go back and research a couple items that were raised by Mr. Walker and also Mr. Liah. And then we will provide a conclusion, a legal conclusion, as to whether we can do those items or not, and bring that back to the council. That's, I just want to summarize the direction from the council to staff.
Yes, there were, I don't think we added all of Ed's points to the flip charts, so I.
I have them written down.
Do you have them written down?
Yep.
Okay. So I know there were quite a few here. I tried to make thorough notes, but I don't know if I got everything covered or not. I think that's a good suggestion. If staff comes back with a summary of tonight's meeting, okay, council will review that. It'll be on our website, I'm assuming, so that the, the public who's here this evening or listening can review that, in case we miss something. I think we're going to need several workshops, but I can't, I can't say dates and how it will be divided up until we get the input back from staff to see where we progress from that. But perhaps, what I'd like to ask done, is that for our council meetings, perhaps there can be a report under your item, Matt, where you give us an update on where we stand on tonight's workshop, how we're progressing?
Yeah, I can, I'll, I'll come back with.
And that will kind of help everybody to stay.
The conclusions that we made on each of these items that were raised.
Yeah, and, and kind of the condition on where we are, the status of where we are on some of the workshop. I mean, some of the research items. We're playing some of this kind of by ear, everybody, you know? It's the only way we can go right now, because we've got a lot of answers that we need, and probably out of the research that's going to be done, there might be more questions that come up and more certain circumstances and situations. So we're going to have information on our website, and of course, you know, council meetings, I'm going to ask Matt to give an update, every council meeting on where we stand. There will be subsequent workshops, though, I guarantee you that.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to be moving forward with the, with this, you know, the survey?
Not until we get some of the financial information back, because I think that was a, an, an.
Okay.
That was a very valid concern. We need to have some financial information before we do a survey.
Oh, I meant the, I meant the study.
Yeah, the study. Yeah, we're going forward with the, yeah.
Not the survey, not the study.
No, the study. Yeah, we're moving forward with the study.
And I would suspect, Madam Mayor, that proposals or options for a study will come before you for formal approval.
Yes.
Because it's probably a substantial undertaking.
Yes. So we're probably going to have to go out for an RFP or something to see, you know, and figure out what it's going to cost us to do the studies. And I understand that Montclair did a study of their sphere, but you've never been able to get any information on that, is that correct?
That's correct. I have not received it.
Hmm, very strange. Seems like it should be a public record.
I agree.
Okay, and then, Nick, you're going to still work with the county and give us information on what they're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll memorialize all this in my report back to the council for the November 7th meeting.
And you'll have that done by tomorrow.
November 7th, it'll be done.
Just kidding.
Yes, ma'am.
Just kidding. Earl, you had another point?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I think, again, I want to thank you all for coming this evening. I think it's been very productive, and I'm really looking for, this is like taking baby steps, right? We've got to keep going forward. We don't want to fall backwards or stop. We want to keep making progress. So thank you all for being here. And with that, we will then adjourn to our next regular meeting, that will be November 7th at 7 o'clock.